I am.
I'll call them, I'll call the meeting to order. Just a little bit about Zoom meetings. We have a lot of members of the public here. So if you'd like to speak when we get to get to the point where if it's your application or it's a audience of citizens, just raise your hand and wait to be recognized so that we don't have people talking over each other. That we are recording this, the whole meeting. So with that said, I'll call the meeting to order. So we have everyone present except Bob. So we will see Justin for Bob at this point. If Bob joins the meeting, we'll address that.
Okay.
Paula, any changes or additions to the agenda?
None.
Okay. With that said, uh, the meeting minutes of February eighth, twenty twenty one. Any corrections?
I didn't see any.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
That was Tom. Um, any discussion? Members, all those in favor, just raise your hand. Hello, can you see everybody?
Yes, I can.
Any extensions?
Yeah, see, yeah.
Rich, Rich is it? Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, so at this point, we're gonna uh, go to item five, audience of students, citizens. Is there anything anybody would like to bring up to us? That isn't already on our agenda. Okay, we'll pass through that. Um, so we're going to, next item up is to continue the public hearing. The application for Scott and Lori Keegan for a re subdivision of two seventy nine eighty seven. Assessors map seventeen lot five and into two lots, the new to be conveyed to a family member. So last we left this. The question that we posed to make sure that we were compliant, I think we, the, the commission was ready to close the public hearing, except that we didn't need input from uh, the conservation commission.
Right.
And uh, that being said, we did receive from feedback, there was some uh, a memo from Paula. Paula, do you want to speak to that?
Um, I could just read the, the memo into their, into the records if you'd like.
If you'd like, yeah, or you just give us a verbal summary of it. I don't think you need to read the whole thing.
Um, the conservation commission, I don't know if the commission met, but Anne was speaking for the commission. Uh, she concurred that if the lot were sold to a non-family member during the first five years, a fee in lieu would be preferred.
Okay. So with that being said, I wanted that to be cleanly addressed. Uh, if we were to take action on this, would anybody like to go back through any elements of the presentation that was made at the last meeting? Or are all of you good to um, close the public hearing? And then make a decision in uh, our, under our unfinished business. Any requests from the commission?
Not for me.
Any, any member of the public that has a question about the application? That said, then um, given that um, we would likely put a caveat in there if it is sold to a non-family member that a fee in lieu of, I assume you have, Paula, did you, I didn't read through the memorandum, but did you address that in, in an approval motion?
Yeah, there's memorandum six point one.
Okay.
Has, there's, it's a two-step, there's the waiver, and then there's the subdivision.
So I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
I think Tom got there first. Any discussion about that? That said, uh, all those in favor of closing the public hearing? Is that unanimous?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, with that, we're gonna move into item six, unfinished business. The application for Scott and Lori Keegan for a re subdivision of two seventy nine, Route eighty seven, assessors map seventeen, lot five into two lots, the new lot to be conveyed to a family member. Okay, so here we are. I, any discussion, anybody have any questions that they'd like to talk? This, this point is only open to commission members. I in favor of just approving it um, per the um, read into the record and making a motion to approve it per the um, memorandum that Paula has drafted for us. Unless one of you would like to read it?
We should do the uh, waiver request approval first.
Okay, so. Uh, let's see. So the river request um, was, was um, I don't think I need to um, read the waiver request. So I'll make a motion to approve the requested waiver of open space requirements per section nine point five of the Columbia subdivision regulations. Well, I, I don't think we're waiving the, the um, open space regulations. We're waiving them subject to it not being sold to a non family member. And I'd be more comfortable with that added.
That there's conditions of approval, which that's part of uh, part of uh, the requirements, which is on the next page, that needs to also be read into the records. Is that um, prior to any transfer of the new, of the new lot, that the deed shall include the restriction that if the property is sold to a non-family member within the first five years, a fee in lieu of open spaces determined by the PZC should be paid to the town. This is the same way we've, this is the same way we've handled it in uh, the last couple times.
Well, if we're formally voting to waive the um, to waive it, they could come back later and if they were sold to a non-family member and say, well, you waived it. Even if that was a condition, um, I, I think what I'm saying.
I disagree, but you can certainly put it in here.
Paula, Paula, give me a second, please. Um, so what I'm saying is, I think that voting for a waiver with no conditions under the waiver could be construed by somebody else reviewing this as somewhat ambiguous. So uh, any thoughts on that from the commission?
I don't see why we just didn't put it in.
I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
Just put, put the same caveat in that, that, that waiver.
Yeah, I'd be more comfortable with that.
Which is what I was about to say.
Okay.
Okay.
It's not the way we've done it in the past, but that doesn't mean that this isn't a better way to do it.
More comfortable with it said that way.
I think so.
I'm looking for the verbiage for the um.
It's under, on the second page, it's under proposed to trans, prior to the transfer of lot two, it's item two.
Okay. I'll read that portion into that portion of the um, waiver. Okay, perfect. Uh, so I'll make a motion, let me modify my motion, a motion to approve the requested waiver of open space requirements per section nine point five of the Columbia subdivision regulations. Subject to the deed shall include the restriction that if the property is sold to a non-family member within the first five years, a fee in lieu of open space as determined by the PZC shall be paid to the town. So second on the uh, waiver.
I'll second it.
Okay, Rich, any discussion? All those in favor? Is that unanimous?
Yep. I think.
No nays, no abstentions. Okay, thank you. Next, uh, let's make a motion to approve this. I'll make a motion to approve the Scott and Lori Keegan re subdivision application based on the application and plan submitted in statements made by the applicant and applicant's agent at the hearing with the following conditions. Prior to the endorsement by the commission of the final subdivision plans for filing in office of the town clerk, the following is required. The approval letter shall be added to the final re subdivision plans from the inland wetlands and water course commission and/or its agent, town sanitarian, and the planning and zoning commission. Approval notes below from the PZC shall be added to the final subdivision plans. All boundary pins and monuments shall be set at all angle points and at five hundred foot intervals for all straight segments and feel verified by the surveyor and noted in the final plans. Prior to the transfer of lot two, number one, the applicant shall provide an estimate of the erosion and sedimentation controls required on the lot, including any controls that will be necessary within the state right of way in order to accommodate individual lot development. Number two, the deed shall include the restriction that if the property is sold to a non-family member within the first five years, a fee in lieu of open space as determined by the PZC shall be paid to the town. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, number one, the proposed lot development site plan shall be reviewed by the town planner to determine if there is a change in the structural location that requires a revised range plan by a professional engineer fee to be paid by applicant. Number two, the developer shall notify the Columbia's CEO at least seven days in advance of any site work to schedule a pre-construction meeting. Number three, erosion and sedimentation control bonds for the individual lots shall be submitted to the town of Columbia in the amount identified in the approved decimate and approved by the town planner. Number four, driveway permits must be obtained from the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation in accordance with the adopted policy concerning driveway aprons. Number five, should any rock blasting be required, the developer is encouraged to notify property owners within five hundred feet of the lot on which blasting will occur at least one week in advance and to offer a pre-blast survey by a qualified structural engineer. That sound good? Yes. Nicely written, Paula. I, I do have a second?
Second.
Second. I saw Rich's hand first.
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Uh, is that unanimous? Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Keegan family, hello. I'm Jerry. Thank you very much.
You're all set.
Thank you.
You're all set.
Jerry, I will get a letter out to you tomorrow. Email you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, under new business, uh, we have uh, Mr. Craig Gates to discuss potential event slash wedding venue. So we, uh, let me preface this. Um, is Mr. Gates or a representative of Mr. Gates or both?
I don't know. I, I know, this is Greg Glod, Glode, who's here. I thought Craig was also going to be here.
Okay, uh, whoever, I would assume it's Mr. Glod is going to speak to this for him. So this is, um, I'll, I'll let the applicant, it's not an application, it's a conceptual discussion. This is at my suggestion and, and Paula's suggestion. Uh, we have a, a potential change in the zoning regulations that is, wants to be broached by a member of the community. And I think the best way to handle it is first with an informal discussion. Find out what the perspective of the commission, a non-binding perspection, perspective of the commission is. So I'll hand it over to um, whoever's going to speak for the principal here.
Yes, good evening. Can you guys hear me there?
Very well.
All right, I, uh, hold on a minute. I'm gonna put Mr. Gates on, uh, I'm gonna have him join by phone. We had a little bit of problems where we were at trying to communicate, so I had to kind of rush back to the office here. Um, I'm, so I'm putting, I'm putting Craig on speakerphone. Uh, Craig, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right. So, so thank you, Mr. Nassif. Um, so what we're looking to do is uh, Craig has recently purchased the property in town located at seventy nine Cards Mill Road. Uh, it's a basically a forty-one acre piece of property. Uh, it's in the RA zone and it contains several buildings on it. Uh, one of which is a seven thousand, a little bit over seven thousand square foot mansion building. Um, what his proposed to do here is, and what we're looking to do, um, he's looking to put in an event facility uh, for weddings. Uh, what he's thinking on this, it would be a high-end venue site uh, for between fifty and one hundred and ten guests. Uh, they do typically, he would run an outdoor ceremony. Uh, that would be quiet in nature. Uh, we typically don't allow music other than the light background music at those things. Uh, then there would be cocktail hour would happen on the patio outside of the building. Uh, and then the reception would happen inside of the building. Uh, there would also be, there's numerous bedrooms here, so he is looking to have guest rooms uh, that would be available for stays uh, either before this, you know, the, the night of the wedding and also afterwards. He is only planning to have potentially one event per week uh, with around thirty-five events per year is kind of what his thoughts are um, that he would like to do. Uh, so we, we were looking at that, it would, they would be cater events. We would not have a, you know, we would not be creating meals on site or anything like that. Uh, present, presently Craig does, you know, own a facility over in Hampton and we were successful two years ago uh, in bringing a much larger event facility such as this uh, that has been operating for a couple of years now. Um, and it's presently in running, it has had no negative impacts to the community and no complaints by anybody in the community. Uh, it's very nicely run. Uh, there've been many events there over the last few years. Um, he's looking at it as something that would be good for your community. Uh, potentially, you know, there's, there's a building here to keep it on the tax roll. There would be improvements made to it that he typically does with his properties. Uh, but as we look around in your regulations, we do not see obviously an area where this is a permitted use or where it's even a special exception use. So we wanted to kind of present this to you, see what your thoughts are, your initial thoughts uh, and maybe walk us through a potential, you know, scenario of how we would get this permitted. Um, and I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, Rick, if there's any questions. Uh, but I'd like to hear what, what the commission's thoughts are on something of this nature.
Let me throw it out to the commission for questions. I have a few questions I'd like to ask about theoretical questions.
Could we have the address of this proposed building again? Uh, the address seventy nine, seventy-nine Cards Mill Road?
Are there a couple of additional houses on that property?
Yeah, there's a, there's an older house up front by the road. There's the mansion building, which is way down by the river. Uh, it's probably six or seven hundred feet off of the road. And then there's also a garage on the property that does have some living space in it per the tax roll for the, for the streetcar.
I realized to all the commission members, this is probably relatively new to you. I've had a discussion previously with Paula and it was my suggestion that we approach it this way to have an informal discussion. Understand if somebody's coming forward and wanting permission to revise our regulations to allow an event center. That would be a townwide or at least in specific zone allowance. And so everything is in that context. So even if we know what specific property um, this proponent of a regulation change uh, currently owns. Um, that, that's only part of the equation and I just keep that in the back, in the front of your minds, actually. I, a couple of questions. So you would have, in, in what you're proposing, that your use of this would be, um, you're proposing that uh, the food would be catered, no onsite food preparation?
Yeah, there may be some minor heating of the, of the food once it's brought on site, uh, hors d'oeuvres and such of that nature, but it would be catered and brought in. So there may be a warming kitchen inside of it. Uh, but uh, that's, that's typical that they would have.
Now, would there be a liquor permit that would be necessary?
Uh, that's one for Craig. Craig, would there be a liquor permit necessary or? All right, he says that, I don't know if you heard that, but for the record, a, a canopy license carries with.
Caterer.
Catering. I'm sorry, a catering license covers that. It's a, it's kind of a floating license that goes with the caterer.
Okay, so they could serve any type of alcohol, um, including hard liquor at these events?
That's correct.
Based on the catering license, okay? And if you were asking us to make a regulation change that was throughout the residential zone, what kinds of, what kinds of differences between this property that Mr. Gates currently owns? And the one in Hampton, what's the difference in the type of road that it's on? And what, what kind of um, limitations would you think would be advisable for traffic, hours of operation? Uh, specific uh, types of limitations on outside music, so on. Any, any thoughts on that?
I do, yeah. And we, we did similar things um, in, in Hampton. So we did, we did adhere to no outdoor music uh, being played other than a light background music before the wedding ceremony, uh, which you really can't even hear it if you're a hundred or two hundred feet away. Uh, but all of the, all of the music for the, for the ceremony, or I'm sorry, for the reception afterward occurs inside. It's an air-conditioned building, windows would be shut. That way, there's no, uh, we would try to stay in uh, compliance with the state uh, mandate for uh, the loudness at the property lines. And, and I, there have been, again, no complaints in the Hampton one for that. Uh, so that would, that's how we handled the, the noise aspect of it. As far as traffic, we uh, each, each site is, is different. Uh, the Hampton site, we did have to get approvals from the state of Connecticut because we were on a state road, but we also exit onto a town road. Uh, we exit out onto Drain Street there. So we did have a, a, a traffic study completed and done, uh, and we were not changing the level of service, uh, which is how they measure how much traffic's being used, uh, because the events are kind of unique is when traffic is uh, coming in. Uh, the traffic, it's staggered. And when people leave, they also leave staggered. It's not like if you have thirty or forty cars there that they would leave all at one time. So, and I think we always make sure that we hire a traffic engineer to uh, go over that information and present that information. So uh, obviously you would be looking at, you know, a special permit so that those things could be taken into consideration. And the other thing we were also thinking of is to kind of limit how many sites in the RA zone this may be applicable to, uh, you know, we were thinking there could be part of the regulations could say that events uh, event uh, facilities like this would only be allowed on properties that have thirty-five acres or more. Uh, therefore we could, and there's other restrictions we could put down if we wanted to say, you know, no activities to certain distances to the property lines, things of that nature, or at least that no volume over a certain decibel would be heard at the property lines. Those are some of the things that we did in Hampton as well as if uh, I think that if there were events of certain sizes, that's a bigger facility uh, that they were notifying the town board of selectmen when those events would be happening. That way they'd be aware of the upcoming events if they, that way they could see if there were any complaints or anything like that. Uh, but there are a lot. We haven't drawn up any kind of regulations for this yet or any kind of text amendment, but I would work with Paula on some of my ideas that I have and some of the ones that we did in Hampton and would try to incorporate those in there so that it would be basically something that's acceptable for the town.
Did, did you have to get a zone change in Hampton?
Uh, we did not, no. No, we were.
What did they, what did it fall under then?
There's a, they have a corridor, a Route Six corridor where they allow different things. And so we added that use into their Route Six corridor zone.
So it's close to six?
Yep, yeah, correct. Yep.
It's, it's actually directly off of six.
Do you have a limitation on when the events have to end at night, like it?
Yes, we, we, we did uh, as part of our, uh, we, we ended them, I think it was eleven o'clock. And that's what it is. It is a four-hour window that uh, typically the weddings run from. There are some weddings that are in the afternoon, but uh, we were not playing music after eleven o'clock.
Okay.
Uh, for the seventy-nine Cards Mill Road property, the outside theoretical area for a venue, if this were an approved use, how far is that from the nearest residential structure, ballpark?
I'm not. I haven't looked at that, Craig. Do you know the answer to that question? About, about.
Really don't wait. It's, I would say the line way is what? A half a mile down. And then you have the houses around the back. It's gonna be. I don't know.
Yeah, I think from the roads on Card Mill Road, we're quite a ways away from it, but I know there is one road that goes into the other town there. I think there's one residence. Uh, I'm just guessing it would be about a thousand feet to that residence uh, that I saw, but that would be the closest one.
Okay. Um, any, any um, questions from the commission? Any thoughts on this?
Again, for good stuff in the town, you know? Doesn't seem like it's gonna be a regular high-traffic event. I think it's more up to the neighbors that are around them and how they feel.
Yeah. I think it sounds like a great idea.
I mean, I agree.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very supportive of the concept. My, my perspective also. Uh, no, there's a whole process. If we're gonna come up with a zoning uh, regulation change that would allow it. But um, any, any concerns from commission members? Not, we don't have to get into specifics about the mechanics of it, setback distances or anything. I, I'm really looking for what, this is just a courtesy to the, the presenter and to the property owner um, to say, you know, if nobody was in favor of this, I'd rather give them a read on that. Um, if we're supportive of it, I, I just, I wouldn't want to see them go through a lot of effort to pursue this if we didn't feel that it was harmonious with our plan of conservation and development and with um, our thoughts on the, the potential use of a, a residential property at this and other places in town.
I think it, I think it's better than developing it as a bunch of houses, right?
Yep.
So there's that. And one other thing, I think it's better that we beat our local towns to something like this than have Hebron or another town come up and doing it too, you know?
Did you have to get any kind of a um, feedback or from neighbors out in Hampton prior, I, I know, I know you said, you know, it fit in that Route Six corridor. Did neighbors have any input?
Yeah, I mean, it was, since it was a special permit, which is what I would, I would, I would expect that it would be in these regulations as well. Uh, we would set it up that way. They, there was a public hearing, so they were invited to the meetings. They even accompanied us on the sidewalks. Uh, we had the first sidewalk and all, you know, quite a bit of the neighbors showed up and they were there. We, we did go through uh, several meetings uh, to, to make them happy with things. They had their input through a public hearing.
Is there input on record anywhere?
Uh, yeah, I imagine the, the town minutes uh, for that meeting that, when that was done.
Okay, I'd be curious to see that.
Yep, yep, they were.
I'm sure, I'm sure there was some um, input from the public due to the fact that the previous owner of that uh, house and parcel um, wasn't even allowed at the beginning, wasn't even allowed a little small ice cream parlor side venue. So I'm sure that, I'm sure Hampton put them through, you know, considerable hoops.
Yeah, and, and I can, I can tell you the commission this from, from my perspective, since I was at all of those meetings. We started out with probably forty neighbors from it because they obviously wanted to know more about what was going on and by the time we were done, they were all satisfied. We did get it approved and we've subsequently gone back and we've expanded the venue there because there, uh, there were, we've got a second ceremony site. There are two facilities basically there, two buildings. So uh, we did change some parking around and things like that. And we had to go back to modify those. Every time we go back to modify those, and I think I've gone back two or three times and, and because of COVID, we actually put an outdoor uh, outdoor roof out there that people are gonna, can stay under, but uh, it's something that we got to permit it as well. We've had no neighbors come. That's, they, so they, that's a sign to me that they've been happy with how it's been running, that nobody's even shown up to our subsequent public hearings for it. So.
I think it'd be really good for the town.
You, you have to make modifications to the the building or like expand the leach field and are there certain things you have to go through to before you're before you're licensed to do this?
Yeah, there's, there's definitely, uh, obviously the first step is always inland wetlands and planning and zoning. And part of the planning and zoning review would be that we have uh, health department approval for the septic system. So yes, we would have to do the, the septic systems. Um, whether there's additions, there may be modifications, but I don't think there's any additions proposed, but I'll, uh, we would certainly, once I get a more definite answer from Craig on that, we would kind of go over that and show that on our site.
Sounds good.
Okay, it seems like there's some uh, very open mind about this on the, from the members of the commission. I don't see a lot of concern. I, a suggestion from me, and please anyone else weigh in on this. Probably the most efficient thing, if you're looking at this project to um, occur, or not the project, but the, a regulation change is for the applicant to propose it, for you to propose it. Uh, you know, Paula will, can give you some perspective on it, but uh, as opposed to it going to our regular run of regulation changes. You know, we always like to offer to a member of the community, if you'd like us to consider something else that we haven't considered, considered, we can run it through our regular cycle of proposed regulation changes that we keep a list of, of target regulation changes. But that would take a lot of time. I think it'll be more timely. But that would take a lot of time. I think it'll be more timely for you if you approach the town and request a regulation change.
My only big concern is that you're gonna be running a, uh, pretty much a full-blown commercial, uh, business in a residentially zoned area.
It really isn't uncommon, if you look around right now, one of the things that's really big, uh, around the nation are these, these event weddings, and if you look at your surrounding towns, I can point out Brooklyn, I can point out, obviously, the Hampton one. I can point out Woodstock. Uh, all of the towns are doing something similar, or people are running businesses either out of farms or other buildings to have event. It's, it's, it's such a big, uh, it's such a, such something that's needed right now. A lot of people are, are, are looking forward and doing to it, and it brings a lot of traffic to your town, and people get to see parts of Columbia they may not see, and that's one of the things that we presented to people in Hampton, and that's why they liked it so much. They thought it was a good idea that, hey, it's not bad to have people coming and seeing what Hampton has to offer, or in your case.
Everybody's a town.
Yep.
There's another, um, place in, uh, Middletown, it's right outside of Middletown called Saint Clement's.
Yep, that's correct.
A little bigger facility, but that could be looked at too, to see what the issues are.
Yep, familiar with that site. I've been there before as well.
Okay. Um, we're, oh, you know, there's gonna be a lot of time to discuss this. If there's any concerns or other things that you think should be on the table now for the, for the, um, owner of the property to be aware of. Um, please feel free to, uh, speak to it, or this is gonna probably start a process. And there'll be a lot of, uh, chance for input, um, both from commission members, the public, and so on.
And, and Craig did want me to mention also to the commission members that one of the things he does is, uh, they do make arrangements with, uh, when several guest families are staying at hotels, say, in surrounding towns, that they do bring them in by bus. You know, he's got the means to do that, uh, to bring them in by bus or van pool, pull them in. It does keep down on traffic as well.
Good idea.
You know, if, if we had, if I had one concern, and I think you'll probably address it numerically, uh, is the amount of traffic impact on, on a country road, you know? We love our quiet country roads here.
Yep, yep.
But that said, uh, I, I, you know, I, I, I think you'll find, uh, a very open mind with us.
Yep, no, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Great idea.
Okay, let's move on to our next item. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for your time tonight, everybody.
All right, our pleasure. Uh, next up is, uh, item seven-two, Hartstone Winery, uh, to discuss a potential accessory use. Uh, that said, we have, uh, Mr. Tabor. Does anyone know Mr. Tabor?
I think so.
Oh, hello there, everyone.
I thought he retired.
No, no.
We can, we can hear you, but we can't see you.
You can. Cause it's dark, probably.
It's dark, well. Very dark.
It's dark in the room where I am. You can hear me, though?
Yes.
Yeah, I can see, I can see your gray beard.
Yeah, I see that. I was wondering if the protocol was to wear masks, but I'm guessing not.
Yes, they're not, no. I, I just won't touch my screen, that's all.
Okay.
Well, what I, what I'm, wanted to discuss with you tonight is that uh, we've been operating our winery now for three full seasons. Um, we hosted a number of events and small parties. Uh, wines have been perceived, perceived well. Um, we hope you've all enjoyed it, those of you have, that have partaken. Um, we, it's, it's not uncommon, um, that we have, well, let me, let me start by saying, before I, before I get carried away, um, we don't intend to change from being primarily wine, um, along the way here. That's our, that's our agenda. We make wine, we grow grapes, we make wine. Um, however, uh, there's a couple other opportunities that we see, and it, and it comes from the public's requests for other things. Um, just as an example, any given weekend, we get, we field calls from, from people who are saying, uh, can we bring beer? Um, you know, we're wine drinkers, but our husbands aren't, or our friends aren't. Can they bring beer? And, and we, we can't really allow that. Um, the state of Connecticut has a provision for farm-produced beers, ciders, uh, meads, et cetera. Um, we, we currently are permitted under farm winery. So we'd have to go back to the state and we'd have to get a, a necessary permit to allow us to produce farm brew. But before we do, we've been exploring the, um, the regulation that's in place to see if we even can do that. Um, or if the regulation needs to be adjusted or, or what have you, um, or if you'd even consider that. In doing so, uh, we've identified that the regulations, um, that are in place currently um, allow for, under, under the conditions that we're operating a large farm winery, uh, the production of wine. By definition, wine is, is defined as any alcoholic beverage. Um, in, including, um, including hard ciders and, you know, fruit-produced, you know, juice, uh, wines and, and ciders produced from, um, from fruit. Including peaches, I think it even says in there. I can't bring up the reg while I'm talking here because it's, it conflicts with what I know I can do. Um, but essentially, the regulation does describe uh, the use that currently is in place as allowing any alcoholic beverage. Um, I wanted to know if you agreed with that, um, understanding, or, um, or if you, if you shared the same opinion.
I don't, I.
Would, would help us, Walt, if you bring up the section in the, in the regulations you feel that.
I can, Walt and I talked about this. I can, I can read as soon as I get to that section, I can read it.
I have the regulations up in front of me. What, so the section number would be helpful for me.
There are two sections. One is the, the definition of, of farm winery. Um, not, not under definitions, but under, under farm winery, where it says, go ahead, Paul. And thank you.
This, uh, this accessory agriculture use includes the commercial making and selling of wine and winery byproducts produced by the state of Connecticut, designated Connecticut-grown farm winery on a farm parcel consisting of ten acres.
You give us the, the section number so we can get there?
Two, one, five, four, under one.
Twenty-one, five, four?
Yep.
Four, okay.
On page thirty-seven.
Okay.
And then.
Would it help the members if I put this up on the screen?
Sure, sure.
Oh, you want me to log in as another user and I can display them, or can you do that?
Um, I can do that, but I was also looking for.
Why don't I do that, and I can scroll it while you can quote them, might be more efficient.
I'd like to, I'd like to reiterate, this is not a, a change of plans or anything like that. Our primary and our sole intention at this point is the production, growing and producing wine for tastings and sale. Um, this is strictly an accessory to what we, what we're currently doing. An enhancement.
I, do you have a concern, which, when you and I talked, you would, had indicated that you were in favor of making a slight modification to the zoning regulations? Um, it, it would, I think just adding an accessory use as a brewery, farm brewery would, would suffice, uh, would just make it nice and clear. Um, one of the things that I know some other towns that have a true, and you and I talked about this, Walt, you brought it up, um, that have a, just a farm brewery in a residential zone. Some towns have trouble because it's basically a brew pub in the middle of a neighborhood. Um, and people tend to, um, enjoy their beer, get a little louder each time they've had another beer. Um, I can, so you and I were reading this to each other on the phone. Oh, there it is, I found it. For the purpose, it, this is under definitions, under definitions on page twenty. For the purposes of these regulations, wine shall include any alcoholic beverage, including brandy, Odevee, cider and hard cider obtained by the fermentation of the natural sugars contents of fruits such as grapes, apples, and peaches. Um, when we wrote these regs in two thousand and seventeen, they were adopted in May of seventeen. Um, the state, I don't believe it, I know that, I now know that they were working on a brewery, farm brewery, uh, authorization, but they didn't have it at that time. If they had, we may or may not have included it. I think we probably would have, but as a separate category. But they have it now. They have it now, yes, yes. And it, same as with, um, wine, they still, they regulate to be of, you have to be a Connecticut grown, so you have to, um, have, um, um, X number of, uh, part of the product, the hops or whatever, have to be, uh, Connecticut grown. Doesn't necessarily need to be on that farm. Is that correct?
The standards are, are actually quite high, um, and I, and I can tell you what they are if that would help you.
I was just gonna ask you to do that.
Currently, for the first year, a farm, a farm brewery has to produce fifty percent of their product, of their fermenting product. Um, tw- excuse me, twenty-five percent, and on this, in the second year, fifty percent. And every subsequent year, fifty percent of their, of the fermented goods have to be produced on the farm. That's pretty high. Um, that means you're granting anything that goes into, you know, into sugar that would produce, uh, the fermentation.
So you'd have to grow, grow it at your place, correct, Walt?
Well, it'd have to be grown in, in Connecticut.
Okay.
Our intention is to grow, like we have in the past, grow the majority of what we grow on our farm. Um, I have, I wanna, I, I also wanna say that what, another thing that's motivating me to do this is that I have a, I have a friend, um, someone I've developed a friendship with in town. And I say in-town Columbia because I think it's important for you to know that this is another agricultural effort in town that we're, we're trying to work with. Um, he actually, he grows, he's, he's planted a, a number of apple trees, and he's got a substantial, um, orchard underway. And, um, and he, his intention was to be producing a farm hard cider.
Cider, yeah.
His, his residence is, is probably, you know, as, as large as his parcel is and as nice of a, of a location as it is, may not be as conducive to the traffic flows that we, that we encounter and the, you know, some of the challenges with separation distance to neighbors and this and that and the other. So he and I have been talking about doing this, um, as, as part of Hartstone Winery. So, so we would be, so we would be introducing far more local, local fruits and, and products to this effort. Um, but the idea is it has to be local, and anything that, that we don't use, um, or, or fifty percent of, or, excuse me. The supplemental part of the fifty percent of what we use has to be Connecticut grown. So it, it really strongly implies, insists that it be something that, that comes from local.
So is the question you're asking us, is it okay to sell um, hard cider either made on your site or another site in town from local uh, 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 fruit, uh, at your farm winery?
Well, it's, it is, it is, but the, the other component is beer. And, and again, it would be the fermented, fermenting goods that go into the beer would also be farm-produced.
Paul, does this mean you'd have to grow your own barley and your own hops?
Not and, it, it's more of an or. In other words, there are some products that, you know, like it or not, just don't grow well in, in New England. Um, you find that there are some certain things, certain hops that you really like, that you can't, they can't develop in, in New England. Seasons aren't proper or what have you. Um, but, but other things, other fermented goods, other grains and, and input items that, that are part of the fermentation would have to be part of what we grow.
Okay, can, can, can we grow barley? I guess we can grow barley in Connecticut, right? That's a.
Barley grows in cold climates.
I mean, they, they, that's, they make, make, they, they grow lots of barley in, uh, in Ireland. So we should be able to grow it here, I think. I, I guess, my other, my other question was, okay, so it says if you got, say, if you got the grain from Connecticut, then you could buy hops from outside of Connecticut? The reason, the reason I ask is the, a lot of the, uh, a lot of what's driving the, uh, the craft beer explosion in Connecticut is, is the, uh, is the ability to use a lot of, a lot of different hops, which, uh, convey all kinds of different flavors to the beer. And, uh, it'd be nice if you would be able to, uh, to do the same, as long as you're able to buy hops from outside of the state.
Well, again, fifty percent of the input.
Okay.
Fifty percent. That means that the other fifty percent can come from other, other sources.
Okay.
Um, so I would say, you know, consistently with your, what you're asking, that the answer is yes. Um, on the other hand, we're not, again, our intention isn't to be a brewery as much as to be a winery that also brewed.
Yeah.
As, you know, it is really intended to be an accessory, and, and it's something we're gonna grow into. I, I don't, I, I can honestly say it's gonna take us, I, I anticipate that we'll be putting another building up um, for the brewery, um, but it'll be a year down the line, two years down the line. Um, we have to, like I say, work our way into it.
Well, you mean a, a, the manufacturing brewery? Not, when you said a brewery, you, you're not talking about a building for a brew pub. You're talking about a building, and what, you'll be ma- I'm just being clear.
Yeah, 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 and I'm, and I'm no, no any of, because I should have made it correct. I should have made it clear.
Just to satisfy the point of curiosity, um, in Windsor, for instance, there's a, a, a malting, there's a farm that grows all their own grains and they're malting now in order to try to feed that, the supply that, um, all the, the growth of the Connecticut craft breweries has, has made. So there's, there are some farms out there looking to try to satisfy that from inside the state.
Is that you, Glenn?
That's me. This is Glenn.
Okay, I'm glad, I'm glad that you spoke. This is not my, this is not my, hey, I, um, I, I make wine.
Hey Walt, I got a question for you. You had mentioned people ask to bring beer so that when they go with their wives or other halves or family members, they could have beer. Is that something you would like to pursue? And I can see an advantage to that. Cause I'm not a big wine drinker. I like it a little bit, but you know, when my wife and daughter and stuff go down there, possibly there'd be times if I could bring a beer or two, that, that would help, you know?
The, the challenge, the challenge with people bringing in outside alcohol is that it's becomes almost impossible to determine consumption. And because we're, we're, we're an establishment that serves liquor, we're responsible for how they leave and what condition they leave. Uh, we've had, we've had, I had a case, um, last summer, and it was just one single case, one single person who decided they were gonna bring in, you know, a, a little, a, a closed container of something. We didn't know what was in it. We can't inspect every, every closed container that comes into the winery. And he was, by, by, within an hour and a half, he was so intoxicated that he was troublesome to our guests, and he was tripping and stumbling and falling. I had to, I worried when he left. And I, I offered to drive him home. He, he was obnoxious. That, the guy, he didn't have one glass of wine, not one. He came on a music night, and he brought in his own alcohol. So, so you see, we can't, unless they come up and they buy from us, and we serve to them, and we have a, have a record-keeping process of how much they're drinking, we have no way of knowing what condition people are coming and going from. So we have to, and we have to be able to for, for liability reasons.
So how do all the restaurants that have, bring your own booze? How do they deal with that?
Say that again?
So there's a lot of restaurants that don't serve alcohol that you're allowed to bring, but they're still responsible also. So how do?
I don't, I don't, how responsible. I don't know how responsible, and I don't know why they're responsible, to be honest with you, if they aren't serving the alcohol.
Technically, I think they're supposed to open the bottles of alcohol. That's probably how they.
Yep, they, they do open them, and they usually charge a corking fee too.
Right, exactly. Right, exactly. That's how they manage it.
That's how they control it.
Is that? So is that how they monitor how much they're seeing they're drinking?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
So what, what would you ask us to do tonight, if anything, Walter?
I'm interested in, in your interpretation of the definition. The definition that's currently in place for a farm wine, for, for wine is, is any alcoholic beverage. And, and under wine, farm winery, it's, it's wine and wine byproducts. So it feels, and I, and I'm not, I'm not saying it is, but I'm saying it feels like beer would fall under that category. Do, do you agree? And I, and I asked that first, but I'm also, that's, that's kind of a leader. If that, if you do, I still think, as Paula was saying, there's a need for clarification and very likely a, a section, you know, a section amendment to allow for farm brewery as an accessory to a winery. I guess that's what I'm asking.
Or a winery as accessory to a brewery?
I just, wine go together all the time.
Sure, sure. I mean, I guess I, I hadn't really even given that much thought, except the regu- the regulation for farm winery already exists.
Yeah, it's right there.
Paula, can you speak to why you feel there's clarification needed? Because it seems under a very literal interpretation of the regulations as they're written, it would just plain be allowed. What, what kind of clarification would be helpful or necessary from your perspective?
I think a very simple addition to the section on large farm wineries. That's just permitting a farm brewery use as an accessory use. And I think accessory is an important word. I wouldn't want. I, this has nothing to do with Walter. This has to do with the next business that might come in. That might decide that there are farm winery. They make a little bit of wine, but they're really a brew pub. And Rick, what town is it? East Hampton that has a, has a Yeah, that they have enough acreage.
Go get my fat orange cat t-shirt if you want.
Um, and it's right in the middle of a neighborhood and it's, you know, I, this has nothing to do with Walt because it's, you know, Walt is I would like to clone Walt's winery for all the other towns around. I don't want another one in town because I don't want them to compete with Walt, but the.
What we address, you know, the fat orange cat brew pub there, it's in a residential neighborhood. And it's, there's huge attendance there and there is not enough space for it. You know, I, I don't know what we need to do to clarify this. Because we already have regulations that say that if, if you're going to do this, you need a large enough parcel and you need enough space and you need enough distance. And I'm not sure that we need to make modifications to the regulations. So that begs the question I asked that if you could tell me in more detail why you think we need to modify the regulation? Because I think our regulation addresses some of the pitfalls of an operation like fat, fat orange cat. And I'm not imputing what they do. They, I mean, I've been there. I, I love it. It's great. But it's in a really close neighborhood. You, you pass really close to a lot of residential resident, a lot of residences that are nearby. They're parking galore. That goes up right up to the edge of the property. I mean, it's, I wouldn't want that in Columbia, what they are. And I don't think our current regulations would allow that to happen in Columbia.
I, I, I can write something up for it with, just as soon not take the time tonight to try to on, off the cuff come up with.
My question, my question is, why do you think we need to modify the regulation in any way? Don't you think it currently?
Just, just as simple as the reason that I.
Rick, I don't think it covers it. I don't think it covers it the way it's, the way I interpret it. I think you need something, you, you need something to define how much the accessory use would be, whether it be 25% or something. I just don't, I, I just, I guess I don't agree with you. I don't think that the way that is worded, that it covers beer.
Okay. It does describe all alcohol, but if, if you think we need to clarify it.
It says any alcoholic beverage, but then there's a common, including brandy, Odevee, cider and hard cider, but.
It does not say beer.
Yeah, it doesn't say beer. And I think.
And that's why I'm asking.
I think.
I think it should, I think it should also, I agree with Tom. There should be a little better definition there. Also, the word brandy is not brandy distilled?
Yes.
From wine.
So you, from fruit.
From wine.
Right.
Yeah, a fruit. It could be peaches. It could be peach brandy or blackberry brandy or.
Yeah, but usually they take wine that didn't go so well and make brandy.
And they distill it.
And what have they got against pears?
Oh. So it's fair to say then, it's fair to say then under the farm winery that distilled goods are allowed.
Yeah, it implies that.
Sure does.
Yes.
It implies beer and it implies distilled. But again, here I am sitting here and I'm saying, do you agree? Because at some point I'm going to fill out an application to the state of Connecticut. And I'm going to say, I want to do a farm brewery. And they're going to ask for the signature of our zoning enforcement officer, Connie.
Yep.
Connie is going to go to the regulation. She's going to read what I just read and she's going to say, geez, I don't see beer.
That's right.
And it's been a bomb. And I, and I, I just don't want that to happen. What I'd like it to be is clear enough that even if the word beer is added to it, just so that the question isn't raised, did it or didn't it?
Yeah, where you've got including branding and all the others include beer.
And if Paul feels that it's, that the, the additional verbiage to clarify even further, I'm not sure that a line here and a line there versus one word is, is a big deal, but that's, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, mine. Well, I think that just putting beer.
I'm comfortable with it. I think I, I think I proposed it. So.
Yeah, that, that's how you started the conversation with me on the phone last week.
Yeah. What do you think, folks? I don't mean to monopolize here.
You know, I think you should, I guess, I don't, I don't agree with most of everybody's perspective, but that doesn't really matter, does it? And I say it this way, okay, if we put beer in there, do we need to also put ale?
Probably.
And so what I'm saying is it already says any alcohol beverage and just supplements that with including brandy and so on.
Perhaps after the word peaches, we have a semicolon and it says, and beer and a farm brewery as an accessory use, period.
So that would, that would. Doesn't that say now you can't have a brewery by itself and have, all it could exist as an accessory to, to a winery?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Is that what you're trying to do, Paula? So you don't have a brew, a brew, whatever they call those places now?
We would, we would need to change. We would need, we, we don't allow a brewery. We allow a farm winery. So we would have to add other regulations for a farm brewery. We can incorporate it into this, but in terms of meeting Walt's needs, I think that would, that would satisfy what Walt is looking for.
Well, beyond that, beyond that, when we wrote this, Tom, you remember the, the effort we put in the regulations we wrote. The idea behind having the, the farm winery, farm winery, then large farm winery, et cetera, et cetera, is that is that it was the large farm winery that had to meet the strictest standards.
Correct.
The access, you know, highway access, the, the separation distances, the parking. And it's those, it's those standards that allowed us to have, you know, music and, you know, additional parking for a few more major events and things like that. So that it wouldn't become obnoxious. It's those same stand strict standards that would be necessary from what I hear, you know, from you folks to do a brewery. So if the standard is already set by large farm winery, it might just be a very simple thing to put it as an accessory until there's need for, for more.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't know who said it, but I think I'd put ale in also. Not just for you, but for maybe somebody else.
But if you say, if, I'm not saying, I wouldn't say beer. I would say a farm brewery, which is the state of Connecticut terminology. And if they make, if the, if the state of Connecticut lets, let you make beer out of pears, so be it. But under the, but I would call it a farm brewery as an accessory.
Let me ask you a question of the commission. Everybody supportive of this approach that we make a modification to our regulations? Whether the, the, the proponent here proposes a regulation change? I think we could probably make a simple enough regulation change that it could easily roll into our next round unless they want it approached on a more timely basis. They meaning Mr. Tabor and possibly Mr. Nichols.
During the, the executive orders from, because of the governor's executive orders under COVID, it's fairly easy to do a public hearing to change regulations right now. Because you don't, you can do everything by email and posting it on the, on the website instead of, and it's far less expensive. Cause you, you don't have to publish something three times in the newspaper.
Okay, so I, I think it's safe to say, and I don't want to, tell me if I, I'm overstepping my, my bounds here. I'm asking the commission members, I think we're supportive of what we need to do to support what you'd like to do, Walt. You know, maybe we can just, if you could work with Paula to come up with a specific verbiage or Paula, you probably already have a strong idea. Whatever those changes are, why don't we review those at our next meeting? And then propose to put it out as a, either a commission started change, unless you think that's being hasty.
I think the sooner the better because these things can take a long time. If they want to have it up in a year, they have a chance to do whatever modifications during the summer, that would be good for them.
Yeah, I agree.
Everybody on the commission have the similar perspective? Any, any concerns about it from the commission members?
No.
None of this is binding. This is all advisory, you know, and we just have a, a local gem in this winery. And I want to help them make it even more viable as long as it doesn't take anything away from the neighbors.
I think it's.
Okay. Okay. That, that, uh, do you need any more from us, Paula, at this point?
On this? No, I do not.
Walt, do you need anything more from us?
No, I, I really thank you for your time. That, that's it.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Good seeing you.
Thank you all. So we're going to move on to item 7.3. Town purchase of Robinson property in Wellswood. Paula, it's an 824 review. For Justin, you haven't sat in on this. Anytime the town decides to buy a piece of land, they have to come for, for a perspective from the planning and zoning commission. And we actually vote on the perspective, but it's not any binding in any way. We're just giving them our perspective. So the town has constantly been trying to acquire land in the Wellswood area because it's either part of or adjacent to a priority wetland in town. Also for recreational purposes. So Paula, how big is this one?
This is a small one. It's about 11, 11 and a half acres. It's the, we have a willing seller who is older. Even by our standards on the commission, older, I think in their, in mid 90s. And it's, there's only one owner right now. If something happens to her, then we'll be dealing with the heirs. So that they've done enough and she's, she wants to sell and wants, and she's the one that's pushing us in terms of trying to get it done. The board of selectmen, it's part of the mission for, for acquiring land in the area. The town has gotten an appraisal. The town will be the one acquiring it. You can open the packet?
Yes, there it is.
Towards the end, it's probably page 17, 18, somewhere up in there, actually further than that, further deep. But it's, the town is in partnership with the state of Connecticut and the trust for public lands to, to acquire as much property in, in the Wellswood area in the extreme south east corner of the town. The town is purchasing it because the town can, can have a closing faster than, than the state of Connecticut could. So I don't know who will end up owning it. If the ownership will transfer, but in terms of us actually purchasing the property, I, I think it's, it's good. It's the pink one, right? The light, the light. Yep, yep. The blue one we own already. The brown towards the bottom, I don't know if it's closed yet or not. It's in, both in Columbia and Lebanon. That's the Markel property. And the, the state of Connecticut and trust for public lands is, is handling, is handling that. So.
So access to this is down this on it, it's paved to this portion and then it's unpaved as you get down here to this 11th parcel.
And, and very narrow. It, the, the old road goes down that red line and takes a left and heads over towards Pine Street.
Okay.
And that's the airline trail at the very bottom.
Yeah.
And Wellswood State Park is the green stripe over on the right hand side there. So there's a sample motion. It meets the, the 8-24 review doesn't really, the state statute doesn't really say what you're supposed to do as a commission. And this is, you're wearing your planning hat right now. But generally what towns do is to just look and see if this makes, and what we've done over the years here is to make sure it's just consistent with a P O C D. If our plan of conservation development said, you know, no, we should have all housing in here, then we would be, and you guys would be making a different statement and supporting it.
Is the plan to now convey this to the state like we did with the, with the brown parcel or is this?
Probably, probably. I mean, it just, I, I think we're the town doesn't have a desire to own all the land. We were in a partnership with the state and that for, for us to manage the properties once this is all put together. But it's going to be state property, state owned. So my get, I can't guarantee that the state will end up with it, but that's the intent at this point.
I'm not a big fan of the state owning anything of ours.
Yeah, but that is their money.
Yeah, they can cut it down whether you like it or not, or turn it into whatever they want. Pretty easy.
No, no, that's.
They can. The stake, the legislature can vote anything they want without your say. So, but that's, that's for a whole nother subject.
Yeah, let's, let's not get into that this evening.
So there's a sample motion there.
I'll, I'll make a motion that the proposed purchase of the Robinson property, map 43 lot four in the Wellswood area of Columbia, consisting of approximately 11.46 acres of open space is consistent with the Columbia plan of conservation and development. Who have a second?
Second.
That's Tom. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Rich is opposed. Any abstentions? So one short of unanimous. Okay. Thank you. The motion passes. I'm going to suggest that we don't get into our regulation revisions tonight. We're getting, it'll get very long in the tooth if we do. What are your thoughts on that, everybody? Sounds like a bold plan to me.
Two things, Dan O'Neal is here and maybe just want to touch base a little bit on it. We've.
I would then.
The draft.
Here.
The draft that we sent you is something that he and I have worked on over the last two or three weeks, back and forth, back and forth. How's this word? How's that word? This phrase, does it make sense? Now this one doesn't make sense. And I think we've gotten a good good cohesive set of regulations at this point. cohesive set of regulations at this point, um, and very, and clear. There's um, only two policy changes that is proposed. One is that uh you'd be able to do some banking of your uh, if you've got an, if you do more work than you need to do for uh in terms of mitigation, you can bank it, and that the um zoning enforcement officer would be able to do surface changes up to uh hundred and twenty square feet without doing a, the worksheet. So maybe, I know Dan has talked a little bit about this to, with the uh L M A C too, so I don't know if you wanna bring him in.
Dan, could could you um tell us, um, what are the things in here that specifically were points? You know, we I, we've had a lot of prior discussions, and I really appreciate your effort on this. Anything you'd like to bring to our attention about it?
I think the only other potential policy thing is the uh, the whole uh one inch first flush of water of any impervious area you put in. Um, and uh, other than that, I don't think I have anything new that came from L M A C, I think I already relayed that um they were opposed to having more than one small incremental addition throughout the years. And I think we're pretty good on everything else, it's really just a matter of clarifying, getting the wording down like Paula said.
Okay.
They were in favor of banking improvements so that you could do more than required, and then later on catch up with other property development.
That's a good idea. That sounds great.
One of the things that I did in in writing this, um, in terms of the hundred and twenty square feet or less, I would, my mind was hearing Dan's uh relaying the information from L M A C that they really didn't want somebody to do a hundred this year and a hundred next year and a hundred two years, two years later. Um, so I sort of tried to figure out a way to to merge the commission's comments and L M A C's comments by by coming up with a the way it's written now is you could do a total of a hundred and twenty square feet over multiple different projects. The, so not just a hundred, you could do twenty this year and then put a a tiny little, you know, step addition on on the porch another year, and the the zoning enforcement officer would be able to to keep, to approve it and keep track of it. And then once you wanted to do your hundred and twenty first square foot addition, you would have to do the the worksheet.
And that would be separate from somebody um also putting a shed, a a a shed, a compliant shed in the reduced setback area and completely mitigating the runoff from that.
That's, it's part of that, it's part of that. So if you did a hundred and twenty square foot shed, you're you're you'd be done.
Okay.
But if you did a fifty square foot shed, you'd still have some more that you could do, you know, you put a little roof over your porch or something, which remember somebody on on, one of my first days here, yeah.
Dan, is that something you're comfortable with, that approach?
Yeah, that that is a good idea.
Okay, I appreciate the work you've done. I think the thing to do is, uh, we, we we hear what you say, but let's get into this in a lot of depth at our our next meeting. I really didn't get a chance to read through this for this, and I don't wanna co- comment, but I have an idea of nearly everything that's in here are things that we've discussed before. But I'd encourage everybody on the commission, please read through the whole um document as it's it's set up here, the draft dated uh February eighteenth. And let's get into, get a real in-depth discussion of it of our next meeting and decide where to go with it. That good for everybody?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Okay.
Thanks, Dan. I have one other, I'll take two minutes on this, under reg revisions. When we wrote the ag regs, and since how we're opening the ag regs up for modification for uh brewery, when we wrote the ag regs, we were, we included a farm store, and we looked around, we, I'm part of the we, we looked around and and figured out, you know, what farms, what areas would be good for a farm store, and it would, it would have to be at at an actual farm that it could then have a store, and it would be a store that to help um, other, or to have supplies for other farms. And we have one absolutely perfect spot, and it has to be on a state road, has to have five hundred feet of frontage by our regs and ten acres. We have the perfect spot, and at one point, I swear it was ten acres, but the, it now on the on the G I S is showing it as nine point one six acres. Um, it's uh the ran up property, which I think would be a perfect use there. Um, and that's what they would like to do. Um, so we may want to um, allow a farm store on a slightly less acres, uh, to make that revision, there's. Pardon?
Reduce it to eight acres?
Something like that, yeah.
Okay, does that make sense to pursue? I mean, there's no, we're not committing to it, but.
Yeah, I think.
What I, what I would do before we move forward with it is I would um tally up the lots that are at least seven and a half acres that are on state road that have five hundred feet of frontage, uh, which right now we have three that that are right around ten um, that aren't developed. I mean, if there's, we've got quite a few, but they're already developed. Um, so I'll just make sure that that we didn't just, I don't want us in a year going, oh, shoot, this this property qualifies and they're putting in a farm store, and that's not where we would want one, so anyway, and it's, it's a special permit used to, so.
Okay, so dig into that, thank you.
I will, okay.
Uh, was there anything else?
Um, just under communication reports, just to let you know, every, over the summer, everybody, the spring and summer, everybody's coming out of the woodwork looking for a building permit to do a pool or this or that or the other, which didn't affect me at all, um, because I don't deal with building permits. From, I don't know if it was on everybody's um, resolutions for the year, starting January second, I get four or five inquiries a week on subdivisions and merging parcels and making other subdivisions, or can I do this on that lot? If I bought this and that lot, could I then do this? It's, things are happening in Columbia, it's amazing, but we definitely have a, in April, we will have a four lot subdivision on Hop River Road coming to us. And um, I have two people talking about two lots, adding another lot to be sold, not for a family member, and uh, one subdivision modification in the pipeline.
There's a shortage of lots, I mean, that's, you know.
Yep.
It's all selling.
Yeah, there's about twelve lots that um, are are in town that have not sold for for development yet, but that's it. I've been waiting on the Hop River one, that's the um, the east side of Hop River Road. It's the farmland that's in there and goes down to the river, and there's two little buildings that are up on on sixty six, odd six, so.
Okay.
Are we into other? I said you went to the other category or comments or something, and I just don't know.
Yeah, I'm gonna move on to um, uh, commission open discussion, anything anyone wants to bring up?
I do. Not for tonight, but I have been hearing a lot of rumblings, and maybe you guys have too, about affordable housing. Have you guys heard anything?
Yes.
I heard a thing about it in the paper.
It's, there's, yeah, Rich probably, yeah, there's rumblings, um, that.
Ten percent.
From Hartford, is it ten percent or five percent?
They want ten percent of your housing to be affordable.
So we need about a hundred and seventy units or somewhere in that vicinity, right?
I thought it was closer to two hundred.
Well, I think it's eighteen hundred or seventeen hundred households. I could be wrong, whatever, close enough. Um, I just, I I, there's there's rumblings that, but Richard's heard, anybody else hearing about it?
I, one of the things, the state of Connecticut has a, and this was on my list to talk to you about a few weeks ago, and then we didn't get there, and I didn't want to burden you with it. Um, the uh state of Connecticut requires all towns to have a housing plan, um, and it's to figure out how to address the needs of of your residents, which our P O C D has a few lines on it, it doesn't really talk about it. I don't know that we will ever have affordable housing, because in order to have affordable housing, you need to be able to. In it's, yeah, you need to be able to put proper buildings close together, units close together, even.
Yeah.
And that means well, it's, we can't do that with well and septic. It just is not econo- a developer can't do it, it's just not economically feasible. We do allow a, an accessory dwelling unit anywhere in town.
I know, that's not the same thing, though.
Well, they're, they're affordable, they're affordable.
But don't they have to be family members?
No, they do not. No, they do not. It's an accessory, yeah, it's an accessory dwelling unit. They, it's a, the lingo that's used frequently is in-law, but that's, it's not a requirement by any means. I know, yes, Cindy used to always call them in-laws, and I used to cut, kept correcting her, because our regulations say accessory dwelling unit, and there's nothing in there that you need to be related at all.
Yeah, because what hap- what happens when your in-law moves out or?
Right, right, you can't, you can't, you can't police that, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, you're right.
Yeah. The, there's size regulate, I think it's cannot, the unit cannot be any larger than one third of the major house, something like that.
Right, I knew that.
But it's um, so, and I, the P O C D, which I don't have one here with me, but the P O C D does list how many of um, affordable, not affordable, um, accessory dwelling units we have. But um, we do need to work on a a plan to satisfy the state at some point. I think it's more important to do the the other regulation revisions than. Just, I mean, if we had well and septic, we wouldn't even be, and I'm sorry, if we had uh public water and sewer, we wouldn't even be having the conversation, because thirty years ago, we would have had uh, had denser development.
Okay. Does anybody know how dense uh town can be in terms of housing and still be supported by the water table? And so there's a limit to how much you can draw out of the ground.
Right.
Is there any calculation that's available for that?
I think it's, I think it'll be based on where you're putting it in, and they would do a water test and flow.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, it's complicated.
It's complicated, but, you know, it's worth keeping in your mind, because if we run past the amount of water we can support.
Yeah.
So, it's the end of game.
We don't have, we're not on an aquifer, um, so it's, so that's, that's usually where you start getting concerned, because that sort of is a fixed amount of water. Um, but the state of Connecticut regulations, it's, it's just property by property as something is being developed.
Yeah.
Is they, they tested at that point.
We have had summers, as many of you know, that a lot of wells go.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, Alex. It's not like being in an aquifer.
Okay.
I'm done.
All right. Uh, anything else? Open discussion, audience of citizens, anybody?
Everybody left us.
I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. I beat you.
Quicker and draw, quick draw.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
It's always unanimous.
I saw your eyebrow pop up, up, Tom.
That's about it.
Thank you, thanks for turning a light on for us, too. I really appreciate that.
At least we're not in Texas with the electric bills.
So Vera left us, when did Vera leave us?